Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order the September 7th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Chief Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Rednick. Commissioner Strong. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. We have a little bit of a crowd, so our, Andy, our wonderful city attorney has given me something to read you guys, so hang on. Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. This meeting provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When the applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes this request. The planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will make their recommendation to the City Council. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make decisions that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of the community. Having said that, we'll move along in our agenda. We are at Agenda Item Number Three, if anyone's following along. Agenda Item Number Three is Public Statements. We'll now receive public statements. Time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on the consent calendar public hearings or public hearing portions of the agenda. If you're here on Items 5A through 5C and 6A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we will now move on to the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. And that is consent, that's Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items Number Four. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item for separate consideration? Nope. May I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items?
Motion.
Thank you. Please.
And second.
Thank you. Um, how about Madam Secretary? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. We're zipping around along to Agenda Item Number Five, Consent Calendar Public Hearings. During this portion of the agenda, the public has an opportunity to comment on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items listed in the agenda. In order to be heard on an item, a speaker must first ask that the item be moved from this portion of the agenda to the public hearings portion of the agenda. If any items not moved by a member of the public or a commissioner, they will be voted on in one motion without further comment. At this time, I will open all the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Seeing no one, does a commissioner wish to remove an item? Seeing no one, at this time, the public hearing on all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And may I have a second? And?
I'll second.
Thank you. And, Madam Clerk, could we please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
All right. That was quick. Now, we're on to Public Hearings Agenda Item Six. It is now time to hear the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Nope. Hold on. We did not do that. We're going to go to this. It is now time to hear the public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition of the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Ms. Kitchen, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. And just to clarify for the audience, that did go a little bit quickly. The Consent Calendar Items were all considered and unanimously approved, so if you were here for one of the three items on consent, that action is complete. The next hearing item is a separate item from that. You're more than welcome to stay, but under no obligation to do so. So, thank you for coming.
Okay, I'm confused. I'm going to stick up. Okay, so there was some mumbling here.
Can we take just a couple minutes? We've got someone in the audience that's confused. Can a staff member speak to her, please?
Are we done? Are we, nobody spoke about 5B? Is that over?
Missed it.
Missed it. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We had to give, we gave the public an opportunity to ask that item to be, to be removed from the agenda, to have separate consideration. So, that was the opportunity to indicate at that point that, that you wanted to be heard.
Okay, so that went by so quickly and was so mumbled that it was not clear to me, sitting here, that that's what was being discussed. Because it should be, for each section, it should be discussed one, and then the next to the next. It should not just be dismissed altogether as one big lump of salt. So, the public should be able to have a right to hear from Ward Seven.
I'd like to take a break. We'll take a five-minute break, and if you could speak to our city attorney, we'll come back in five minutes. And we're back. I would really like staff to kind of weigh in, because we use the beginning of this meeting as a teaching opportunity as to what the commission does. So, we just had something happen that I've never seen happen. So, I would appreciate if staff could kind of weigh in as to what happened and what the result was.
Sure. Chairman Lomas, that was a group of several residents that lived near one of the items that was on the consent agenda. It was a parcel map to subdivide a piece of property at 178 in Comanche that has already been zoned commercial and already went through several public hearings to become zoned commercial. The property owners and neighbors that were here tonight wanted to know more about what was actually going to be built, the specific businesses that would be constructed there. And I explained to them tonight that that is under the purview of the property owner at this point, as they do have a vested right as a property owner to develop it with commercial uses. And at this point, now that the map has been approved, the city would issue building permits. We would ensure that they adhere to the proper commercial development standards, provided adequate parking, et cetera. And the property owner was also here and offered to speak with the neighbors outside more about the actual businesses that they planned to build there.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, now we will move on to our public hearing. Ms. Kitchen, you were going to give us a staff report.
Yes. Again, thank you, Chairman Lomas. So, the project that is on the non-consent agenda tonight is a request for a GPA and a zone change on approximately five and a half acres located at the southeast corner of Taft Highway and Ash Road. This project site is shown on the aerial map here, and it's part of a larger parcel, about 20 acres, that is part of an approved tentative tract map for residential development. And as shown on this aerial, the project site is surrounded on three sides by existing and planned residential development, notably a Lennar tract to the north and two additional tracks to the east and to the south. To the northwest of the project site is the Bakersfield Sports Village. This is a master-planned regional recreational center that was initially approved by your commission and the City Council in 2007. And the intent of this 247-acre site is to provide a state-of-the-art facility that will serve not only the residents near this site and all the residential that you just saw, but also the community of Bakersfield as a whole. And eventually, at full build-out, it is the hope and intent that this becomes an attraction for regional, statewide, and national sports events and championships. And there are two corners of the Sports Village that are zoned for commercial uses in the future. When this was initially approved back in 2007, it was anticipated that it would be fully built out by 2015. However, we did have some times changed economically and physically since 2007, and to date, the soccer parks up in the upper-right corner are constructed, and the rest is still pending and in progress. And the Assistance Parks Director is here, I believe he's still here, Mr., yep, there he is, if you guys have any other questions about that. So, back to the project that's being requested tonight. Again, it's a request to change a piece of an existing residentially planned parcel to commercial uses, and that would be LMR to GC and R2 to C1. As you can see, this piece is a part of a larger planned residential development. And this is a mock-up provided to us by the applicant. As I mentioned, the site has already, already has a tentative approved tract map on it for about 92 lots. That was approved in 2007, and that's the larger area in the red rectangle. And the project site tonight is the blue area inside. And according to a tentative mock-up that was provided by the applicant, that's also known as Figure Five in your staff report, the applicant intends to, if this commercial designation is approved, readjust the streets within the existing tract map, as shown in yellow here. And it creates a configuration where the commercial traffic on this parcel would need to traverse through the local streets and the residential neighborhoods, because this piece is too small and too close to the intersection of Taft Highway and Ash Road to have direct access from those facilities. So, in reviewing this request, staff carefully conducted a thoughtful analysis of compatibility and found that the request does raise several issues and creates several potential inconsistencies. First, the request appears to be inconsistent with the existing entitlements on the site that we just spoke about, namely that tentative tract map for residential development, as well as the tract maps that are adjacent, and the multifamily and single-family zoning in the area. Secondly, the request seems to be premature. As I mentioned, the sports complex has vacant commercial zoning that's been in place since 2007, and it hasn't been utilized yet. In addition to that, this map shows all of the other commercial zoning that's already in place and waiting in this area. That's all of the red on this map. As you can see, with the exception of some resident, or some commercial zoning near Stein Road, there is no commercial zoning south of Taft Highway. Taft Highway is kind of the unofficial line for urban development at this point. We just haven't really reached out that far yet. There's plenty that's in the works and in the wings and ready, but as you can see, it's vacant and has been vacant for some time. So, additional commercial development at this point does not seem warranted. Another issue is that this request is inconsistent with several policies of the general plan, and those are highlighted in your staff report. Notably, Policy 21 encourages a separation of at least half-mile between new commercial designations. Policy 18 requires that all new commercial sites be at least five acres. It's unclear if this one would meet that once you take out the right-of-way that's needed for Taft Highway. Policy 28 requires that new commercial development include design features and block walls and exterior roadways, which separate it from residential neighborhoods, and this design does not do that. In fact, it connects it to the residential neighborhood directly, which would cause commercial traffic to go through the smaller local streets. And then, and that kind of goes to the last point there, that there are some access and design issues, again, that have yet to be addressed with this design and layout. And we did receive a late comment letter from Caltrans questioning the traffic memo that was prepared for this project and reserving the rights to require a full traffic study should this project go forward. So, at this point, overall, after much analysis and careful thought, staff concluded that this project appears to be premature. And so, it's with very careful thought that we are recommending that it be denied at this time. Maybe at some point in the future, once some of this existing commercial zoning inventory has been built out, it may be more appropriate to do it at some point in the future. We do have the Public Works and Building Department representatives here as well, if you have any additional questions related to traffic or engineering. And with that, I'm here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, and proceed.
I'm Roger McIntosh with McIntosh &amp; Associates. I'm representing Germhar Enterprises, Dr. Matab Singh, this evening in this application. And if I could use the overhead projector, I have several things that I would like to I wanted to start out by going through the staff report and reiterating and highlighting some of the items that were identified in the staff report. I'm sure you all have the staff report, and if you could follow along. Staff says that, they point out that no specific development plan has been submitted. That was reiterated by the Planning Director. On Page Three, it talks about vesting tentative tract map 6969 was approved, that was approved in, I believe, in 2007. And that they, it was approved for 92 residential lots, and that is a vesting tentative tract map, which has certain rights instilled within that tract map. We understand that there will be a revision to that tract map should this application be approved, but I'll come back to that later. Also, on Page Four, there's some discussion there about site access. Project site is located at the southeast corner of Taft Highway, which is an expressway, and Ash Road, an arterial. As such, the project is required to comply with the City of Bakersfield, County of Kern, and Caltrans Development Standards for Taft Highway, which is State Route 119, and the city's complete streets policy for Ash Road. I want to highlight and emphasize that Taft Highway is designated as an expressway. That was designated in 2012. That has nothing to do with the tentative map, that is a vesting map that's already approved. So, if this application is denied, then the vesting tentative tract map has certain rights, and that expressway does not apply to that tract map. So, therefore, that right-of-way in front of that tract map will not be acquired. It will have to be condemned, and it will ruin several lots that are back up to Taft Highway as it was currently designed. Water and sewer supply. Sewer service can be provided by the city. Obviously, the sewer treatment plant is right across the street, just north of the sports facility. We also prepared and processed what's called a Kernow PSA. It's a planned sewer area that was put in place a few years ago, and this property, as well as others, south of Taft Highway, will pay a fee into the Kernow planned sewer area to extend sewer lines, lift stations, et cetera, all the way east to Highway 99. And I have a map that shows you. I'll present that to you later. My point is that currently, the sewer is being extended south of Taft Highway. There's a bore that we bored under Taft Highway to extend that. A lift station is being, is into Public Works for approval right now to facilitate the growth and expansion of that whole area south of Taft Highway. Also, on Page Four, there's under environmental review, there's analysis, we did an air quality study. Regulations would further reduce any potential air quality impacts, so no significant impacts were identified. Cultural resources. There is no evidence for substantial adverse change in the significance of a historic or prehistoric cultural resource, and biological resource study was prepared, which would reduce impacts to biolog, biological resources to less than significant. And we also prepared a traffic study, which identified the project's share of, of traffic As was shown on the exhibits, we did prepare somewhat of a, of a site plan. I'll come back to that. Continuing on in the staff report, Page Seven. Existing entitlements. This development would create two conflicting entitlements on the same property, the existing residential tract map and the new commercial zoning. I don't think I've ever done a project that didn't have conflicting entitlements. If you're going from agricultural zone to commercial, or agricultural to residential, they always conflict. That's why we're here in front of you to make that decision, which you recommend to the City Council. We can work through all those conflicts. If this is approved, obviously, we would do a revised tentative tract map on the remaining area of Track 6969. Under Commercial Interface with Residential Development. This design would undoubtedly cause commercial traffic to transverse residential development within vesting tentative tract map 6969 and 6759. 6759 is to the east of, of Track 6969, thereby creating the potential for incompatible interplay between the future residential and proposed commercial development. Your large retail ordinance requires interplay between residential and commercial development. How else would you get to a commercial site if you didn't have that connectivity, if you didn't create a pedestrian way to get to the commercial site? If you don't have that, you have to drive around the block, out on the arterial, come around the front door, you drive a quarter-mile to a half-mile just to get to the grocery store, to get a carton of milk. Why wouldn't you want that interplay? Existing vacant commercial. Points out, staff points out, that city-owned State Farm Sports Village, which includes 25 acres of undeveloped commercial property, emphasize undeveloped. And then, at the bottom, the last paragraph there, "To date, the 37 acres of commercial zoned property within the State Farm Sports Village area is undeveloped. Based on the overall project and future development of this complex, it is staff's opinion that rezoning existing residential zoned property adjacent to the 25-acre corner of existing commercial zoned property is premature. For orderly expansion of development and good planning practices, it would be advantageous." Advantageous. Advantageous to who? I've never seen that word used in a planning document. Advantageous to the city, because they have a commercial site across the street, obviously. So, it'd be advantageous to wait until existing vacant commercial is fully developed before considering the approval of additional commercial uses at this location. In doing so, it will enable a concentrated analysis of the type, size, and need for future commercial development within this area. Okay? And then, it goes through all the general plan policies on Page Eight. Policy Number 21, encourage a separation of at least one-half mile between new commercial This is an exhibit that I prepared, looking at all the commercial designations throughout southwest Bakersfield. As you can see, there are numerous corners that have commercial designations throughout southwest Bakersfield, all up and down Taft Highway, Panama Lane. They're all throughout the southwest. I've, I've never been involved in a project where staff recommends against a commercial corner across the street or on an opposite corner. Actually, I believe it's, it's this corner, it's the Costco corner, it's either this corner or this corner, which has four distinct commercial sites at all four corners. It started with the northeast corner, and then the southeast corner, the southwest corner then developed, and Costco came along and finally built on the northwest corner. So, as far as encouraging a half-mile separation, I don't think that policy, that policy can go both ways. If you're against a project, you can use it. If you're for a project, you can use it as well. And this is a good example of it. Policy Number 18. This is the one that talks about, require all commercial designations to be assigned to sites where the aggregate of continuous, contiguous parcels designated for commercial use is no less than five acres. I don't know if you can see it. It's a little dot there. It's a one-acre commercial site that was approved by the City of Bakersfield in 2012, when they wanted to annex that property into the city, and the property owner required or requested and demanded that it be zoned commercial. It's one acre. It's 205 feet by 205 feet. So, I don't think, and we're above the five acres. We can show that we have a net of five acres or greater based on our, our plan. Policy Number 28. Staff is unable to make a determination for the commercial development meets these requirements of requiring screening, landscaping, setback, lighting restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. So, they can't make a determination. Policy Number 29. Again, staff is unable to determine that the project will meet the requirement that requires automobile and truck access to commercial property sites adjacent to designated residential parcels be located at the maximum practical distance from the residential parcels. Can't make that determination. Policy Number 30. Require perimeter streets around commercial office, retail, mixed-use, and industrial business parkland uses, where they will enhance pedestrian and vehicular access from adjacent residential neighborhoods, or promote convenient access to public services. These are all reasons why staff is, is recommending denial. And finally, there are no conditions that exist on the vacant site to warrant exception to that policy, which is Policy Number 30B. Therefore, the recommendation is for denial. So, in conclusion, staff says, because of these access issues, the compatibility with general plan, numerous development policies of the general plan, it's premature to approve this, this project because of those issues. because of those issues. So I had to do a little digging. Can everyone read that or can they see that? This is from the Sports Village EIR. And in their urban decay analysis, they state that it was proposed to be 400,000 square feet of commercial development. For analytical purposes, it was estimated that 119,000 square feet of retail uses would be developed within the area in addition to a 240,000-square-foot motel, hotel, and 41,000 square feet of amusement, entertainment use. A total of approximately 600,000 square feet of retail development consisting of existing, under-construction, and planned, proposed development is projected to be present within two miles of the project site by 2015. As was mentioned, that didn't happen. The analysis concluded that the project would not likely result in significant urban decay impacts since the type of retail uses anticipated to locate within the project area would be largely specialty retail uses rather than the traditional neighborhood-serving retail uses anticipated to be present with other commercial centers in the vicinity, serving primarily local residents. So in that EIR and in that analysis, that was approved using that information, it was determined that it would not be a neighborhood retail center and not serve the neighboring community. Okay, enough of the negative stuff. Now I'd like to go through a project that I processed two years ago. It's at the southeast corner of Panama and Gosford Road. At that location, written by the same staff planner, approved by the same planning director. Though no specific development plans have been submitted at the time of this application, the applicant is proposing the future construction of up to 85,595 square feet of retail commercial development on 7.68 net acres and anticipates that construction activities will be completed in one phase and operational by 2017. It goes through the analysis. Therefore, staff has included a condition requiring that if the project is approved, the landowner developer shall obtain a lot line adjustment or other subdivision action that will provide lot lines to match the new zone boundaries. We have no problem with such a condition. The applicant has agreed to the condition to process a lot line adjustment on the eastern parcel subsequent to that approval of general plan amendment. And it gives you the number there. Relationship to surrounding uses. There's vacant commercial property in the area. Staff notes that the surrounding vacant commercial zoned properties have also obtained entitlements for development as described in table one below. And this is the summary of what's around that site. 743,629 square feet of retail commercial development on the northwest corner. On the northeast corner, site has remained vacant. Currently, no development plans have been submitted, C2. The northwest corner was M2. Southwest corner, C2 PCD. Approximately 588,000 square feet for retail commercial development. Approximately 65,000 square feet for neighborhood commercial uses. That corner is vacant and undeveloped. Although there is already a large amount of retail commercial plan for the southwest and northwest corner of Panama Lane and Gosford Road, the applicant has indicated that the proposed project could provide services, goods and services to the developing residential neighborhoods, and that the project can also use, offer a different type of retail commercial product within the area to complement the other larger commercial projects due to the differences in size, scale, and types of retail services. Already, the city has acknowledged that the commercial site at the northwest corner is not intended to serve the neighborhood. And then we get into all the reasons and policies why this is a good, but this was a good application. Policy number 17. Ensure that adequate lands are set aside for neighborhoods serving commercial uses adjacent to designated residential areas. We fall into that same category. Commercial development is adjacent to single-family residential zoned property to the southeast and southwest, which already have tentative maps approved. Policy number 18. Require all new commercial designation to be assigned to sites where the aggregate of all contiguous parcels designed for commercial use is no less than five acres. Here's where you can either use it against you or use it in favor. Project site consists of 9.62 acres, which complies. Policy 26. There is existing commercial zoned property in the vicinity of the project site. However, these neighboring properties are currently undeveloped. Should the general plan amendment zone change be approved, the developer will be subject to city development and design standards. We would expect to fall under those same standards. Policy number 28. Require that commercial development provide design features such as screen walls, landscaping and height, setback, lighting restrictions between the boundaries of adjacent residential land use designations so as to reduce impacts on residences due to noise, traffic, parking, and differences in scale. The developer will be required to comply with the City of Bakersfield-adopted development standards. This is the exact same situation on this site as it is on the application in front of you tonight. There is no site plan here. There was no site plan there. However, the conditions of approval required us to meet those standards and ordinances that are in effect when that site goes to develop. Policy number 29. Require that automobile and truck access to commercial properties should cited adjacent to designated residential parcels be located at the maximum practical distance from residential parcel. The developer will be required to comply with the City of Bakersfield-adopted development standards. We agree, completely agree. And policy number three. Ensure that residential uses are located in proximity to commercial services, employment centers, public services, transportation routes, and recreational and cultural resources. The project site is located along Panama Lane, a transportation route with planned commercial uses and employment centers. And in conclusion on that application. No specific development plans have been submitted at the time of this application. Consistency with surrounding development. Proposed commercial development could provide goods and services to developing neighborhoods in this area is compatible with surrounding land uses. Consistency with the general plan. Encourages the identification of land use and maintains continuity of existing development. Although there are already large retail commercial development planned for the southwest, northwest corners of Panama Lane and Gosford Road, the proposed project is located on a smaller site that could facilitate smaller-scale commercial development. This is the same situation. We have residential subdivisions that are around and adjacent to the site. We have residential subdivisions that were adjacent to the same site. Consistency with zoning ordinance. Recommendation: For the reasons stated above, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the applicable development policies. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. By the way, this went on, you may not remember this because it was on consent and it was unanimously approved on consent. So what's different here? What's different is that the city owns a 25-acre commercially designated site across the street. So is it advantageous to the city to deny this? To recommend denial? Is it your job to determine that? As a land use planning commission, to make a determination whether or not this is good planning? Also wanted to point out that particular site at Panama Ash has a connector street which goes into the residential area to the south. And that's specifically designed to allow the pedestrians and the neighbors within that area to go to that retail site. Also wanted to go over the standards for the expressway. I mentioned that the expressway was adopted in 2012. This is the policy and resolution that adopted that expressway. It allows for access if there is a fourth auxiliary lane along Taft Highway to get access to commercial areas all along that corridor. And that corridor goes from Highway 99 out to I-5. So you know there's going to be a lot of traffic. And frankly, I don't think I would want my child to have to cross an expressway to go to the store to get a carton of milk. That's not good planning. When you have 65 mile an hour traffic up and down an expressway, you don't want to have pedestrians. It's not a pedestrian-friendly environment. So this is just, I'm just highlighting here the area that would be taken for the expressway. That's that yellow strip. And you can see I've overlaid it over the existing vesting tentative map to show you that they would lose one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about eight, eight or nine lots there along that northerly tier that would have to be condemned. Also wanted to point out that with the vesting tentative track map that's already approved, they are vested at a, what's called a regional transportation impact fee of $7,343 per lot. There's 92 lots in that tract, and that would be a fee that would be collected for 92 lots of $675,556. With a revised tentative map, those vesting rights go away. And with the C1, the total would be the new fee of $12,870 per lot for 57 lots left over of $733,000. And the commercial site would pay an additional $826,000 for a total of 1.5 million. So the benefit to the city with this application is a net $884,000 above what would be paid if the project is denied and we retain the vesting rights of the tentative map. I don't have the overhead, the aerial. But I think that to deny this application is not good planning. It doesn't provide the services that are needed for the neighborhood to the south of Taft Highway. There's also a corner on the northeast corner that would be a perfect opportunity for commercial use as well. And when we did the Lennar Tract to the north of that site, we actually created an access point. We were required to create an access point to the parcels in that corner. So that is good connectivity. It's good for pedestrians. It's good for families to be able to walk to the store. They don't have to drive to the store. It reduces traffic. And we're asking you to make a good land use decision tonight so we can go to the city council and let them make the decision about whether it's advantageous to the city or not. So I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Thank you. Please come to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Helen Dunisia.
At the microphone, please. Could you say your name again? Thank you.
Helen Dunisia. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I just came to hear what the results would be. But I am the northeast corner that he just referenced. And it's been in my family for over 60 years. My sister and I and daughter own it now, and we have been paying property taxes for 31 years. And we had it, while we still have it listed, with a commercial real estate office. And my broker had gone down to the city a year ago when we listed it and was told there'd be no problem getting that corner rezoned commercial. There is nothing else that can go on that corner. No one in their right mind would build a house facing Taft Highway. I grew up there for a while, saw many cars go through the property, and people get killed. There's a lot of accidents out there. Now there's a signal light, which makes it much more safe. But someone at the city, my property sold a couple months ago, went into escrow, and someone down at the city told my buyer that there was no way he would get rezoning. So my buyer understandably canceled our escrow. And I have been so angry. I wasn't going to talk tonight. But now I'm very angry over a comment Jacqueline made about the city owning the commercial property, the 25 acres across the street. And her comment that they weren't ready to proceed, so we shouldn't be able to proceed, is not right. It's not ethical. And I don't think it's even legal. And what if they decide not to build for another 20 or 30 years? Am I never supposed to be able to do anything with my property? And someone at the city told my broker, oh, somebody can build a house there. Well, nobody in their right mind is going to build a house there. I have been a broker in this town for 31 years. I have sold for many, many major builders, many, many thousands of houses. No one would build a house in that location. And so I am siding, of course, with Dr. Singh. And I think that entire intersection needs to go commercial, all four corners. And I think I am speaking from experience and someone who had lived on that street for a long time. And I honestly don't think, because the city got their zoning in 2007 and acquired that property, that they should take priority over a family that came here in the 1800s in a covered wagon, came here from Italy and crossed this country and settled in this town when it was dirt roads. And the main street was Baker Street and covered wagons still going down that street. And we have stayed here for four generations. And I don't think the city should have priority just because they decided to zone a piece of property across the street a few years ago. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project?
Good afternoon. My name is Mohammed Guraya. I lived here, I'm still living here, since '73. I never came to these hearings. And I'm a real estate broker, too. And I don't have to, except only one statement I can say. That area is growing very fast. We need a gas station, mini- That area is growing very fast. We need a gas station, mini-market in that area. And because of the city is having that 25 acre plus minus, and that if you guys are doing that, that is not fair. And Mr. McIntosh have said very with details and with all the statistics, which I, if I was prepared to do that, I maybe have a more statistic. But I'm saying, ladies and gentlemen, bird is in your hand. Either you leave, kill it, or leave it alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Dr. Mathab Singh. I and my family own this piece of land. I'm in the practice in this community for almost 10 years. Work in hospitals, Mercy Hospitals, San Joaquin and Good Samaritan. I work as a hospitalist. I'm ready to develop with my family. And if we get opportunity, you know, a lot of southwest area is expanding area. You know, every day I see a lot of patients in southwest community. Our ERs are full. So we really have good plans there. And down the road, obviously, as we told, commercial, gas stations, convenience stores, even urgent care is a good part. We can do that with a lot of our fellow physicians also. You know, small doctor, like urgent care kind of thing, the way the community is, you know, expanding, the houses are expanding there. So that's what I'm going to, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak against the project? Seeing no one. Now we have a little bit of different. Give me one moment to make sure I don't mess this up because we're changing just a touch of the format. So no one wanting to speak in opposition? Making sure. Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions? This is a new, this is new into how we're doing this. So at this point, we'll ask for questions from the commissioners, not opinion, only questions.
And this will be questions from the public, not from the staff?
Not from staff. Thank you for the clarification. You're not clear? At this point, this has never been done. Typically commissioners in the past have waited till the public hearing is closed. So we're now going to entertain questions from the commissioners to the applicant, to anyone that has spoken. Apparently not to.
Let me clarify that. It can be the public or the staff.
Okay.
But just as long as you don't express your opinion until after the hearing is closed.
Yeah, this one's kind of tough because we're opinionated. So you guys got to be really sure you're not.
And the reason we're doing this is so that we maintain the integrity of the public comment process. So that's the reason we're doing this.
Yeah? Yes. Okay. Ready? We've got. Number three, Commissioner Bell.
So this is to Mr. McIntosh and to his group that he's representing. Is there a specific reason why you have not done a little bit more work regarding the layout or the development plan of the C-1? And it sounds like Mr. Singh has got some good ideas and might have clarified.
Commissioner, we're bordering on opinion, so.
I'm just, okay, thank you.
Yeah, be real careful.
All right.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that. We'll just ask why you may not have done a little bit more to clarify staff's requests.
I could use the overhead again, please. Thank you. We did prepare some options and some ideas when we shared these ideas with staff. We did not submit anything because a commercial site is somewhat fluid in that you have different types of users, different types of tenants that could come in. In this particular layout, we have three or four different layouts. This one has a fast food, has a gas station, convenience store in the corner, some retail and retail back here. Some of this could be used for more medical-related urgent care perhaps, or treatment facilities. And we even had the discussion about possibly some medical-related. And the planning director indicated that, well, that could go in a CO zone. But that is, not all the uses that we are looking for can go in a CO zone, unless you get a conditional use permit similar to Stockdale Highway and Coffee Road. But we don't want to go that direction. We want to present a plan and submit a plan that works within the neighborhood. This particular one has access off a local street here and possibly here. Doesn't have to be back here. And then another access point here. And I didn't show an access of Taft Highway because I didn't realize until just a couple of days ago that we can get access off of Taft Highway. So we've developed some plans, but again, it's fluid. And until we get some tenants lined up and be able to submit a site plan for site plan review, we, these are just some ideas that would support our concept.
Commissioner Kate, no, Commissioner Wade, you're next up.
Okay. Mr. McIntosh, this one's for you again, please. I think I might have missed one of the points that you opened up with in regards to problems with Ash Road, should the existing zoning remain in terms of a lane? Did I hear this properly?
Well, it's not so much, Commissioner Wade, it's not so much problems on Ash Road. It's entitlements that are already in place that would preclude the acquisition, again, the overhead, of the right-of-way that's needed for the expressway. When this map was approved, there was no expressway policy that was adopted. The policy for the expressway was adopted in 2012. This map was approved in 2007. So to widen this out or to comply with that expressway, we would not have to comply with that expressway policy with the vesting tentative map. We could go ahead and develop this area under the old rules without it being an expressway. So the problem is that you can't get the expressway right-of-way unless you condemn about nine lots out of that tract map. And once you condemn the lots, you're going to have vacant lots here. So we have the entitlements in place that we can go forward with the vesting tentative map as it was originally approved without giving up the expressway.
Gotcha. See, you're saying you can kill two birds with one stone by, with the change here. You want, the city won't have to go through the process of taking those properties and screw.
They would have to go through and condemn those nine lots and then it would become vacant lots.
Okay, second question. And I guess I wanted to get to the heart of your argument. It sounds like you're pretty expressly saying that the city, there is a conspiracy within the city to promote their own land value. And I want to make sure I understand that properly. Is that in fact what you're saying? That forces within the city are conspiring to hold out other, development of other commercial or even zoning to commercial in order to promote their own property value?
I'm not going to use that word. As you saw in the staff report, encourage means to give oneself an advantage over others. Or it's not encourage, it's advantageous, means to give oneself advantage over another. So it's in the staff report. I mean, I'm not going to use conspiracy. I think what I'm saying is you as a land use decision body should make the determination whether it's a good land use decision and put all the rest of it aside.
Thank you. I actually, sorry, I have a bit more here. I also wanted to clarify, I have questions for staff, but I want to clarify to comments that were addressed to us earlier that when you refer to "we," we aren't the city. We're citizens here, you know, so when it comes to thoughts about what the city wants to do, we aren't the city. Yeah, no, it's. Okay, okay.
Sorry, we have to stick to Josh's questions.
Okay, so.
You can come back with the opinion.
On to questions.
Only questions right now.
I'd like to hear from staff, their response to the accusation that there's a double standard happening here. The comparison was to the property on Gosford and Panama, so.
Can I kind of weigh in? This, we're into opinion again, wouldn't you say?
No, staff's answering the question. As long as the commission doesn't indicate what their opinion is, one way or the other. He's just asking a question of staff's response to what was stated.
That was what the applicant said, and I'm curious.
Sure. Commissioner Wade, I'd be happy to answer that. As Mr. McIntosh pointed out, the standard of criteria for evaluation here should be a good land use decision. And that's what the staff report says again and again, that this doesn't appear to be a good land use decision due to the smear quantity as shown on this map of existing vacant commercial. From a purely land use perspective, we have quite a bit. It hasn't been used. Things have changed since 2015. The market has changed. That property that was developed in 2015 hasn't been constructed. It hasn't been built. Planning isn't done in a vacuum. At some point, it's up to the decision makers yourselves to step back and say, when is enough enough? And the staff recommendation at this point is, well, a general plan amendment is a discretionary request. The existing entitlement is for residential. And if someone would like to come in and change that, then we're more than happy to entertain that request and evaluate it. And that's what we've done. And ultimately, it's up to the elected and appointed officials to make the decision. And then with regard to the other intersection or the other parcels at this intersection, we haven't received any requests or applications for a zone change to commercial, notably not on the northeast corner that was referenced earlier. And if we did receive one, we would entertain it in just the same fashion.
Okay. Ms. Deniesha said that what we're doing basically, actually, I'm sorry, it may have, Mr. McIntosh said that what we're doing here, unless the change happens, we're going to have the child going across an expressway to get a carton of milk. Is that the city's intent that commercial should only be on the north side of Taft Highway?
I don't know that it's appropriate to make an end-all-be-all statement on that at this point. I think that when we look at these projects and look at what's existing, we see that there really isn't development yet south of Taft Highway typically. And I know there is some real estate professionals on the commission or those of you that are affiliated. And we certainly hear a lot from the real estate industry, but we're hearing it is that there's kind of a glut of commercial land on the market right now that's not being developed. When the market dictates it will be built. Certainly, the city's interest in the general plan policies require safety and all development. And it should at some point that tract be built out with the residential uses as it's currently entitled. There would be appropriate intersection crossings and things like that if any pedestrians wanted to cross either of the intersections. And again, Public Works is here to weigh in on that if you would like.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kater.
That's a perfect segue, Jackie. My questions were for Public Works. I think this is a, I don't think right now, so. But as this is located at the intersection of an arterial and expressway, it seems like there are fewer conditions of quicker traffic. And so I'm just curious as far as the ability to access the site other than, so what the access points look like as far as the allowable zone of entrances from Ash Road, from Taft, and then I think if you could speak to the, since this area is not fully, the streets aren't fully realized yet in their width and capacity, what anticipated improvements for pedestrian access are across Taft Highway?
Okay, on your first question, we, all we had mostly was just the frontages in Taft Highway and Ash. And they did seem pretty short of what the city standards are to get driveways in and out of there. And we typically don't see, you know, knuckles like this, residential standard knuckles to access commercial sites. And I mean, we have our traffic engineer who could speak a little bit more on that. But that was, for us and Public Works, what made this site different than other projects that Mr. McIntosh had referenced in the past, where there was a clear separation between commercial and residential. I've never seen knuckles like this. You know, and maybe Roger can reference a project where he did this, you know, many years ago. But this is not a typical standard engineering design that the city approves. Because you can have homes there, you know, right next to that commercial. You can have a lot of traffic, and those streets are not designed to handle that volume of traffic. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but.
You did. I have a follow-up if that's okay. The very preliminary site plan that Mr. McIntosh presented showed access from Ash Road. And given the dimensions and the layout of this parcel, would Public Works see the primary access from a vehicular standpoint being Ash Road or is?
No, that driveway that was shown on the other site plan, that would not be allowed. There would be no driveway on Ash Road because that does not meet city standards. And Ravi may be able to confirm that.
Can you please come to the mic?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ravi Purivedi with City of Bakersfield Traffic Division. Yeah, that access that was shown on the site plan does fall within the taper, which the city doesn't allow. So that's it, you know.
Ravi, can you stay at the front? Because I'll have questions for you too. Thank you. Commissioner Kater.
And so then just to summarize, the access points are both shown kind of at the curve of a street entering off of an arterial. And is that, is that a configuration that is an approved standard for access to the amount of square footage that is being proposed or allowed? Particularly off of Ash Road, you know, you have traffic coming off of an arterial.
Yeah, like I mentioned, I don't think so. I mean, we typically don't have knuckles like this to enter into commercial zones like this. As far as the stacking, yeah, you'll have, you should, Ravi can expand, but we will have storage issues where, you know, that distance is too short. You're going to have cars stacking along that local street before you can turn onto Ash Road. So I mean, that's, we have, you know, serious traffic concerns about this site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. It is for, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, hello. This is for Public Works. Are you saying that the access off of Ash is not doable? Is that what you're saying?
The driveway that he showed on a previous site plan that showed it between that yellow knuckle and Taft Highway, that driveway is not a city standard driveway. That would not be allowed.
Because of the distance from Taft Highway or?
Because of the distance from those two streets and because you're in a taper, that's an expanded intersection. We don't allow driveways in those expanded intersections. That's not a city standard.
Because I'm just trying to imagine in my mind what is happening at the sports park across the way. And there is a turnout off Ash into the sports park. If I remember right.
I'm guessing that's further away from the intersection.
I see.
And it's not in a, in a right turn lane in an expanded intersection. But I'd have to confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, like, that's a safety concern that we don't have driveways in those tapers and those transition areas or you have a right turn lane there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for probably Public Works. I don't know, somebody's got a random question. I don't know, somebody's got a random question. Mr. McIntosh showed us a yellow line across the expressway, and that's to deal with the access to this property, yes? My question is, once you take out and allow for your decal lanes and to make this a usable piece of property, are we still at five acres?
Yeah, I haven't calculated that. We'd have to calculate that.
We may be under, what I'm looking at, Mr. McIntosh, what I'm looking at, you have 5.68 acres. How much do you have left once you get this thing usable?
The vice chair, 5.3 acres. I've redone the calculations, about three tenths of an acre.
Providing?
Providing the expressway right of way out of the 5.65 acres, you would end up with 5.3, around 5.3.
Would staff concur that that sounds about right?
I, I mean, to confirm that, I'd have to calculate it myself, but that seems in the ballpark.
Okay. All right, any other commissioner questions, and we'll move along? Nope. All right. All right. Commissioner Bell.
Back to staff. If the zoning were approved, do you feel that you would have inadequate opportunity to impose the restrictions that you're concerned about?
I mean.
Dan, Mr. Pedea, I'll start just briefly. Mr. Bell, or Commissioner Bell, the existing vesting tentative max 6969 has specific street improvements correlated to Taft Highway and Ash Road that are tied to the phases of that map. If this project were to be approved, that map would need to be revised. This commercial parcel would then be separate, and there would need to be another review or another process to determine how the appropriate mechanism would be instituted to get the necessary improvements along Taft and Ash. Mr. Pedea is the expert on how that's prepared, but that kind of lays out the summary.
Yeah, thank you, Jackie. Yes, I mean, really, what, for us to ease our concerns, we, it would be better for us to be able to look at the revisions of both of those track maps and a site plan simultaneously so that, so that we could know that circulation would work properly because of that knuckle and the knuckle on the east side, you could potentially have heavy traffic volumes from that commercial site routed through that residential tract to the east, and those streets are not wide enough, and the pavement structural sections are not designed to take that volume of traffic through it. So, again, like I mentioned, we have serious traffic concerns, and it would be better for us to, to look at those, to be able to look at the proposed revisions to both of those tracks and the site plan at the same time before we committed to making this parcel commercial.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question of staff. I heard conversation about, or talk of the status of sewer access to the southern side of Taft Highway. Where are we with that?
Yeah, so, that, there's a large sewer trunk line being constructed right now in Ash and under Taft Highway, and there are plans that are very close to being approved for a new sewer lift station on Ash Road north of Taft Highway.
How many existing track maps live on the south side of Taft Highway?
Chairman Lomas, I'd have to look at my favorite map in the whole city, which is the vesting tentative map. I know that we have 222-ish tentative track map citywide. I'm not sure exactly how many are south of Taft Highway, but it's definitely probably no more than 5% of that, maybe 10%.
We'll come back to that. My intent is to finish this up, close the public hearing, take a small break. So, if anybody's got any, any research questions, let's ask them, and we'll take our little break, and they can, all right? Let me just review if I've got anything that. One question I just have no idea. In one of the renderings that we saw here, there was a fire lane. Is that counted in the acreage if they're proposing a fire lane?
That would be a part of the 5.3, yes.
Okay. And that counts. All right. All right, I think that's good for me for now. So, we'll move on to, hang on. We will move on, we have a rebuttal period, so you get a chance to talk again.
Well, no, I just wanted to reply to your question that you.
We'll, and we ask questions right now, and, hold on, okay?
Chairman Lomas, I was able to pull up that map. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 tentative track maps south of Taft Highway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to rebuttal right now, give everybody a chance to say one more thing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will have only five minutes. So, make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of your previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. And, Madam Clerk, you ready to start the clock? Mr. McIntosh.
Roger McIntosh, just answer some questions. Yes, I did a project at the southeast corner of Ming and Ash in the late 70s, has local streets all around it. It's been a very successful project, and I just wanted to point out that there is no residential in the city's property. That whole square mile is no residential whatsoever. There's residential on the south side of Taft Highway to the east, there's about 400 lots in the tentative maps for the next half mile over, and there's residential on the north side of Taft Highway, and many homes are being built in there. The first phase of track 6759 recently recorded, and there are homes that are going to be built and started in construction just immediately to the east of this site. Thank you.
Anyone wants, wishes to speak in this rebuttal period? Nobody. Anyone before, for, or in opposition? Let's try that. Nope. Okay, then we will now, I will now close the public hearing on this item. We will return it to the commission for comment and action, but we'll take a five-minute break right now. All right, we've closed the public hearing, and now we'll hear from the commissioners. And first up, I have Commissioner Bell.
I'm first?
Yeah.
I can have an opinion now?
You can have an opinion. Please do tell.
So, with all due respect to the applicant and to Mr. McIntosh and all the interested parties, this is a little bit of a tweener for me, in that I am greatly concerned about the access, I am greatly concerned about the lack of certain details that aren't there that may not be mandatory, may not be absolute to a zone being approved, but I think in this particular property are giving me pause and cause on this project. It would be my preference, frankly, that some of these issues be resolved. I do not have a problem with the zoning, but I do have a problem with the process not being, am I in any, am I okay to do all this? Okay, thank you. I want to, I just, you know, with the process being, some of those results being had between the applicant and with the city agencies. I would really like to see the applicant and Mr. McIntosh revisit those, get those resolved, and it would then be in my purview that that would resolve my concerns. So, it's just right there. It's a tweener for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bell, because that really hit on some of my concerns as well. By the way, you can shut my microphone off when you think I should, okay?
You want to hear what you.
Yeah. I agree that, I don't have an issue with a commercial, the commercial zoning per se, but I think this plan lacks some things that we need to see. And so, I would like to see some more collaboration on this issue and some plan that, that, I focus on the comment in the staff report about being premature, and I don't mean that in terms of premature because we haven't built out other commercial space in the area. I look at it as premature in that this plan, to me, wasn't really ready to come to commission. So, I would like to see some, some better, better plan of that commercial use of that particular parcel. Thank you.
Nicely said. Commissioner Kater.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to reiterate what the other commissioners have said so far. In speaking with Public Works, the fact that this site is pushed in the corner of a very busy intersection, and there's not clearly defined or clearly conveyed access from a public standpoint, that it seems to me exclusively residential access, I think that that warrants a level of study and a level of coordination to verify that, once you get past the zone change, that the project can actually move forward, be a benefit, and comply with development standards further down the process. And the information that we have now, I don't think that that really can be made or determined. I see a lot of question marks, and I think without, I do, I am a proponent of seeing how commercial and residential uses can interact, how people walking, people biking can access retail without having to cross major arterials, but I think that requires a level of, of study, a level of presentation, a level of coordination that's not present in this layover image. And so, I would agree with the other commissioners thus far that I think that this current proposal lacks clarity for confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wade.
Just to piggyback on what was already said, because I, in general, would agree with what was said, to start rezoning things south of Taft Highway, to make that leap, even though it's not, I guess, not an official line, to make that leap needs to be kind of a slam dunk case, and I think there needs to be an immediate need that, that's expressed, and I don't know that this project fits, fits that.
Okay, everybody talks, so now it's my turn. I've had, I hope I say this right, boy, I hope I say this right, so bear with me. We're here to be representatives of our community, and we're trying our very best to say, all right, what fits? Here's a need, and how, and we have somebody that wants to do something, they demonstrate the need and the benefit, and we're to say, does it fit? Does it make sense? Does it fit within our goals for our community? Does it fit in the needs of today and the foreseeable future? Land that people have, and I want to say this, and I hope I don't offend anybody, but we all, most of us all own land, and with our land, we have rights, and that comes with our land use and our zoning. Those are the rights we have. If you want additional rights, you've got to come here, and you've got to demonstrate why it's a benefit for a community. If you are awarded those additional rights, your property is now is worth more money because you can do more things on it. We all start with, I mean, it starts with ag land, and ag land's only worth so much. I don't know what it's worth these days. All the way up to, you know, commercial, which is worth a lot more. So, we're not, it's not our right to get a higher usage, a more intensive usage. It's not our right as a property owner. That's why you're here, is to demonstrate to us how it will work for our community. The commissioners have all said you haven't demonstrated that. I agree with that, that you've not demonstrated that you should get a higher usage for this property. In saying that, too, when you look at commercial, I'm starting to look at it a little bit different. And I was, I was happy to see staff was taking a critical eye on this, because Bakersfield's very amicable, and they're very easy to work with, and I was a little dismayed to hear offhand comments towards them. They're very easy to work with, and I, and I will, I've always heard that. But when we're looking at commercial, commercial I'm seeing, and I know everyone else is, too, commercial's changing. Brick and mortar's changing. The internet's changing everything that we're doing. So, as a commission, I'm taking this more seriously. The way we've always done things, we can't do it that way anymore. We have to take a critical eye, or we're going to have big boxes and commercial and a mess if we're not paying attention to what's coming. Just because we did it a certain way, as Mr. McIntosh demonstrated with other examples, we did it a certain way in 1974 and then in 2005. The world is changing, and we can't just point to the past to say it's okay to go forward in that manner. So, I want to commend staff for taking a critical eye on this. I'm not a fan of very small commercial properties. I'm not a fan on an expressway and an arterial, you've got all that traffic moving. I want to make darn sure that people get in and out properly. I want to make sure that the infrastructure's there, that it will be a safe place. That's not been demonstrated to me today. So, I would have to agree with staff on their recommendation. Thank you. Look for other commissioner comments or a motion. Or we're staying here all night, guys. I got a, Commissioner Bell, thank you.
So, I will make a motion to confer with the staff's recommendation and not approve the zone change at this time.
Andy, is that sufficient, or do you need it read into?
Yeah, as long as they don't approve this GPA, general plan amendment and the zone change, correct?
That is correct.
And do you need the neg, wasn't there a neg deck on this, too?
Yeah, not adopt the neg deck.
And not adopt the neg.
Thank you. May I get a second? Commissioner Wade.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. So, that's all of our public hearing items. We're on to communications. Staff?
I did have a couple of quick things. First, I wanted to sincerely thank your commission for your feedback tonight. The last two years that I've been here, I've been listening to you guys very carefully, and I understand that you want a higher standard of review, and it's encouraging to hear that you recognize that. I also have several staff here tonight from the Community Development Department. Paul Johnson is the supervising planner, and Tony is here as well. He works in the subdivisions to. He works in the subdivisions department, and this is great feedback for them to hear as well. And Steve Esselman was here earlier. He's our newest principal planner. He had to depart, but thank you for that. And then, in addition to that, I wanted to welcome Commissioner Coleman. You made it through your first planning commission hearing. Welcome. They're not all as exciting as this one, but we'll try our hardest to keep you engaged. So, thank you for being here.
And I would just like to add, too, as you noticed, obviously, Commissioner Schwartz is no longer with us, and with his departure, went our chair. So, at our next meeting, we will be electing a new chair and vice chair, if Vice Chair Lomas is selected for the chair, if that happens. But if not, a new chair. So, look for that at the next meeting.
Any commissioner comments? We're on to eight. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. Actually, I did want to give thanks to Richard Schwartz for the service that he did do for the planning for the city of Bakersfield. I think he leaves pretty big shoes to fill. I just wanted to thank Councilman Freeman for nominating me and the council for voting for me, and I hope that I can live up to their expectations. I appreciate the introduction from staff that I had the other day. It was very informative. I learned a lot, and I look forward to working with staff and the rest of the commission over the next however long it goes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Nope. I would like to say thank you, Richard Schwartz. You are a pleasure to work with, and welcome, Commissioner Coleman. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, and good night.